Good evening, everyone. I thank you very much for your patience with us tonight. And we're welcoming you to tonight's town board meeting. If you'd be gracious enough to stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, thank you very much for coming out tonight in this weather. We appreciate it. And for those at home, welcome. David, if you'd be gracious enough.
The Audit Committee has reviewed the bills and found them sufficiently paid.
Thank you very much, David. Do I have a motion?
I'm in motion.
I'll second. All those in favor of the positive result from the Audit Committee's review?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Anyone opposed? Anyone standing? Four zip zip. Thank you very much. We now open up tonight's public comment period. And we just ask that any individuals wishing to make a comment, please step up to a little podium and please carry on in a civil manner. That's all we ask. In respect and for everybody here, comments are directed to the table or on across the floor to anyone else. Please, thank you. Olivia first, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Olivia Karas. I live with my husband and kids just outside the hamlet here. And two things tonight. One is, I think everyone has seen the flyer, but I just wanted to remind the board and all those present that there's going to be a discussion session about the town park proposal. It'll be next Tuesday at seven o'clock at the VFW Pavilion. And I do hope that anyone who's interested in helping to come up with a plan that the whole town can enjoy and feel ownership over would be encouraged to come. And I hope we'll have a great discussion about the details of the proposal that's been set forth and just any other thoughts that people would like to share on that. The other thing I just wanted to mention tonight is I wanted to encourage the board to approve in full the requests of the Town Park Committee as well as the Library ARPA request. So these are two funding requests that have been made for the ARPA funds, which I think, as most people know, was federal funds that were given to us. And we will forfeit them if we don't allocate them by the end of the year. And I think these are two very popular proposals in town. I think the requests are modest and appropriate, and I do hope that the board will fully support them. In fact, it's my understanding that even if both are fully funded, there will still be over $50,000 remaining that needs to be allocated by the end of the year, or we will lose the money. And to that end, I was thinking back, two years ago, there were listening sessions that were conducted in town, four listening sessions that were conducted, where I believe over 100 people participated and talked about what they thought would be good uses of the money. And a whole lot of great proposals were raised at that time. It seemed as if the town park was the consensus, but there were a lot of other great ideas. Improving town buildings, improving signage, beautifying the town, cemetery improvements, a lot of great ideas. So I would just encourage the board to maybe look back at those, the notes from those meetings that were conducted, if there's any shortage of ideas, which I'm sure there is not. But all that's just to say that I think that the town park and the library would be a great place to start in terms of spending that way. So that's why I wanted to share my thoughts.
I have one question.
Olivia.
Is it Thursday or the 13th?
It's Tuesday, which is what, the 13th?
Is that what's on there?
Pardon me?
Is on that newspaper.
Is ARPA on there?
Okay, okay. I just made sure it's there.
Your check here is right.
Oh, oh, just yeah. So it's Tuesday.
Tuesday the 13th.
Yep, that's seven. Thank you.
Mr. King, please.
You're here for everything that Olivia just said. Thank you. And on the same subject of the town park, I have also taken this relatively seriously and have had the privilege of addressing this a few times. Also with the same concerns about our funding and that it would be harnessed and utilized for this purpose. I am of the belief that in order for this to appropriately move forward, it requires the support of a legal instrument wherein the town would identify the creation of the town park and move forward with its financing and engineering requirements. Pursuant to that, I have taken the liberty of attempting to draft a resolution that would chronologically and substantially incorporate those terms which we commonly heard used here, that are resolutions legally formed wherein we've recognized here in the whereas and where upon. I have used some of those terms in this draft resolution. I want to make it clear that I am, yes, mimicking what I have heard being delivered here. I am not mocking. I am not presenting myself as some kind of a pseudo attorney here. I'm simply respecting that legal terminology is required in order to make things substantial and to be comprehensive. I realize that all of you who serve on the board are busy. You have businesses, you have families, you have homes to take care of. I have the liberty of being a retired individual and I could find time to attempt drafting a resolution, which would, which I'm going to offer copies of these to the town board this evening and to our council. And my request is that after we have the meeting on the 13th and we have a much better idea about which way we are likely to move forward with our town board, I would be honored if you would consider some of the chronology and the substantiation that I've offered in this draft resolution again. I'm only mimicking what I have heard here in respect. I am not mocking. Any questions?
That's it, Mr. King, go.
All right. So that I'd offer you a copy of my attempt. And I will, I will offer up, shall I offer a copy to the town court as well?
Please.
Will do that?
Please. You want to sit?
Thank you.
Do you have a pen?
This is fair or you don't? Okay, I'll get it back. Thank you.
I think we might want to note also that even though it has to be committed, funds need to be committed by December. They don't need to be expensed. So in the long run, we have to have our insurance company involved and see what their stipulations are for covering the building or whatever else we have in liability, things like that. Of course, our county attorney would be involved also.
I respect that it is a large endeavor beyond my purview. I'm just trying to help.
Most certainly, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the board? Thank you very much, Lee.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. Public comment period. Anybody else? If there's no other comments, we are most to close the public comment period for the session of the meeting. All those in favor of closing this session for the public comment period? Any opposed? Anyone standing? Thank you very much. Next item up, we have the town clerk minutes from July 25, 2024 workshop meeting.
I'm willing to accept the minutes.
Thanks very much, David. All those in favor of accepting the minutes from the July 25, 2024 workshop?
I'm gonna then abstain.
You have a statement? Three zip one. Thank you. Okay, next item up, correspondence. The only thing that I could find is just a notice that I received from the Historical Society in reference to their meeting Concert on the Green on Sunday, September 8th, 2:00 PM, and will be held in the basement of the Post and Hill Lutheran Church, Lot 351. As we started from the ring gate because we're all here in the summer, we're not able to hold it. That's the only correspondence that I have so far. Okay, next item up, we have the liaison reports. Planning board? Thank you, Don.
I'm Don Haplemann representing the planning board. We had several proposals before the board. First was a public hearing for subdivision on Algonquin Beach Road. That was approved. Perry Sand Gravel actually was, General was splitting it off from Perry Sand Gravel. 6.8 acre parcel to build a house. That was approved and the seeker was negative on that. We also had a representative from Orsini's come back to the board. We had closed the public hearing for that. They are trying to open a public, or sorry, a private party venue on their property. We had closed the public hearing on that because we hadn't gotten any correspondence from them. That will be reopened on the 9/3 meeting, September 3 meeting. We had a proposal from 3DK Real Estate, a piece of property that Mr. Cassell owns on Snyder's Corners Road, looking to put a subdivision on that. There were a number of questions that had to come back to the board. A number of answers had to come back to the board on questions for that. And so that will be in discussion hopefully at our next meeting. And then lastly, we had a plot line adjustment was approved was for Jason and Joyce Anderson. They bought some property from an adjacent property owner, wanted to combine it together with their property. That was approved and the seeker was negative on that also. And one other thing that I brought up, and I brought up several times during previous meetings, was the Feral Cat Sanctuary on Snyder's Corners Road. I was told that nothing to be done with that without a written complaint, but I do want to bring that to the board. I do believe that that needs to be looked into. I will put forward a formal written complaint on that, but I think something needs to be done there. Also, the farmer's stand that was opened further up on Snyder's Corners Road, that was brought to the planning board. We were told it was going to be just commercial, sorry, they were going to basically sell wholesale to local markets. That has now become a retail stand, and that was never brought to the planning board either. And I think that needs to be looked into. So gonna put some paperwork together for that and for the Feral Cat Sanctuary, hopefully to the enforcement officer.
Thank you very much, Don. Thank you for the report. Next item up is the zoning board, liaison report.
Hi, Nicole Haplemann for the zoning board. We have, we had one item for last meeting, which will be carried over to our meeting for next month, which next month our meeting will be on Tuesday, the 20th, instead of Thursday, the 22nd. So it'll be this, yeah, this month. It's August already. This month it'll be on the 22nd, on the 20th instead of the 22nd. We had a discussion. Mr. Quick came to us and we left the public hearing open. It was for two area variances for a shed and a fence. And there was some dispute over the height of the fence. He wanted to change now the height of the fence to 8.2 feet, where it was originally at 6.8 feet. And there was a cease and desist order on it right now. I'm not sure if it is still there because I know he was going to meet with the code enforcement officer because he did want to paint the fence. And there is issues also that the fence is only 14 inches off of the other property owner's line. So this is why the public hearing is going to be kept open. And then we'll make our decision on the 20th of this month.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Could you make sure that the addresses are put in on the reports? Because I don't know where this person lives.
Oh, sure. Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, he's in the hamlet.
In the hamlet?
He's in the hamlet.
Okay.
So.
Question is, who? Okay. One of the new houses there?
Yes, he's right on one of the new houses, right, right, right in the hamlet. And as I said too, we're also in discussion. He wanted to attach the shed to his fence, but the angle of the roof would have, the water would have drained into the neighbor's property. So we, the shed needs to be moved. It cannot be attached to the fence as he wanted to. So we're also in discussion that if he does move the fence, it has to be into the backyard and he would have to clear some trees, but he really doesn't want to have to do, to do that. So that is also what's going to also be discussed at our meeting on the 20th. Okay?
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Next item is fire company. Thank you, Dan.
Evening.
Good evening, Dan.
Been an eventful, been an eventful month, I will say. Thirty-five calls to the month, 26 of them being emergency medical service calls, four fire alarm activations, four power lines down, and one water rescue. Since that time, we've had another water rescue from the Barbara Bill Falls. Basically, one month almost to the day. The first tragedy happened on July 7th. We just had another near drowning. That individual is still in grave condition at the local medical center. That happened on, happened August 4th, this Sunday. Tragic events. Both these individuals were from out of town. Both individuals were, yes, it's their signage, supposed to be no swimming. It's facing. That place has been a swimming hole for decades. Even when it was illegal to be down there, people were swimming. Unfortunately now, it's on Tripadvisor. All right, the Barbara Bill Falls is on Tripadvisor. It's a scenic place to go. At any given time, there is a large volume, there's a number of people that are up there. It's a very, very beautiful place. We are very fortunate to have such a nice area. However, it does come with some very large inherent dangers. One, just the trail going down to the falls itself is very steep. That itself, you have to be into some type of condition. Once you get down to the edge, if you decide to venture into that pool, it is filled with currents that you can't see. Most people do not appreciate the true power of water. When these accidents have happened, we've had a significant rain event, usually 24, 48, 72 hours beforehand. So we have an increased volume of water going over those falls. With that said, when that happens, that develops all kinds of currents that we can't see. Those of us in emergency services are trained with this, recognize and appreciate and respect those currents. We do a lot of things to safeguard, even when we have to perform a rescue, to have to be very, very mindful of those currents. The layperson doesn't know. They're venturing into these waters, very, very slippery, and they're getting taken down with tragic events. This one, we did resulting and the person was removed from the water, was found, was in cardiac arrest. Resuscitated at the bottom and we used a technical rescue or raising system to bring them up from the bottom of the falls, to bring them up to the top and then was airlifted by helicopter to all the medical center. It's just one of these things of we're having a tremendous more activity that are going out up there. We're going to be meeting with the powers to be about some ways that we can potentially help educate the public and see how we can help reduce some of the risks to the public that this is now, that's now possessing.
The question, is that, that under the purview of the class open?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is. So we're going to be meeting and see what we can do. The other problem with it is down to baseless falls, there's no cell service. All right, so when you're down there, your cell phones are a brick. I believe the SOS feature on your phone may work. If anybody hasn't seen an SOS feature on your phone, you hit send. Just hold the button down if you're in SOS. It will contact an emergency dispatch. And they should be able to triangulate where you are. But as far as any other work, your phone is not going to work down there. And that has presented a significant problem with delaying of notification of emergency services because a person has had to scale that cliff edge, had to scale that trail to get to the top, to the parking lot, to be able to make the phone call. And that, at that point in time, seconds are precious, valuable minutes are valuable. So that is adding. So we're also going to look at how can we identify this when incorporating the county? We're incorporating, we're trying to meet with the, with Spencer County Bureau of Emergency Services, Communications, people working with some of the cellular services, things of this nature, and how we can potentially improve that area and make it safer.
Could a hardwire emergency phone be put in down there? Sort of like the dam on the north.
Yeah, I don't know if it can be, just with the terrain, couldn't? But then that's that maintenance line, that would have to with.
Somebody's responsible for it.
And with that line, that's usually a dedicated, a dedicated copper line to the communications center. And I will say, those are very expensive. Those are very expensive. So there's a lot of things. We're going to be, we're going to be talking. We have a meeting coming up this month with the individuals. What can we do? Because unfortunately, it's going to happen again. Okay, we're going to have calls there again. There's just, we've just had way too many people there.
Have the button considered closing it?
At least during the summer.
At least for now, until we can, I mean, two drownings in a month is quite a bit.
It's not, it's, I can't call that.
No, I know, just, I.
These are things we're going to have to discuss on this. The issue with it is, I want to say, we were, our fire police were out there directing traffic and stopping, trying to stop traffic coming up because of the rescue going on. We have people coming up and they said they're going to go to the falls and say, no, the falls are closed. No, but we still want to go. I said, but the falls are closed. We still want to go. No, you don't understand. The falls are closed. So even when we're saying the falls are closed.
Is it like when we have, now we're going to have all this rain. I've never been, I've never been up there, but does the pool at this time of year when you get all that rain, the pool gets deeper? Or then when it gets, if you don't have a lot of rain, does it get a little shallower or?
No, the pool, the pool does, it will have a more volume of water. The issue is, there's a more volume of water there coming over the falls and causing some really nasty, nasty currents. And currents that won't necessarily carry you down, but will carry you back into the falls and keep recirculating you around the falls and you cannot escape them. For those who are trained in water, we learned how to avoid them and how to recognize it and get away from them. That's the problem. You get actually brought back into the falls. It drives you underwater. When you pop back up, it drives you back into the falls. And you're essentially.
It's like a riptide, right?
We, they call them drowning machines because it just keeps recirculating you through. And it's, to the untrained eye, it looks like just a beautiful, peaceful, a great place to relax. The other thing behind it is, is with that pool, with some of the dangers, it's all rocks. Right? And it's good until it's not. You have a lot of big rocks in the area. They're covered with an algae, very slippery, things of this nature. You could be walking, you're in four feet of water, your next step, you're in eight. So when you slip, you slip into water over your head and then you end up possibly slipping into the current. So it's poor footing, very nasty currents. So it's just one of those things. There is signage up there at the beginning that says, no swimming. There is a small signage, you're about to go, no swimming. But it also says, no alcohol, no dogs, no campfires, things of this nature. But unfortunately, we've had this really hot, hot weather. It's a beautiful pool. It's a great place to go and visit. And it's, I will say, it's very inviting. And when you're down a couple hundred feet down into a canyon area, who's going to know? That's kind of the mindset that takes place. Unfortunately, we've now had two tragedies, two tragedies there. And I'm not quite sure of the outcome of the second one. My thoughts and prayers are with the family and with the patient that makes recovery. One other things just like to bring up, just so you know, next Saturday is the triathlon. That's going to be running through the, the tri village, the triathlon. That's going to be running through the town. Runs between around 8:00 AM to, around 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM coming down through it. There will be, there will be some road closures as the athletes come through. So just be prepared during that timeframe. There may be restricted travel and may be restricted traffic and the ability to get out, especially off of Davis Drive there, at the Four Corners, at Snyder's Corners. You may be looking at when the, when the athletes are coming through, that for the safety of the athletes, roads will be, intersections will be shut down.
Is there a way of getting like a path, at least published on the town sites, so people are aware of the residence?
Do they go to the Capital District Triathlon? They have a map there of the course.
We have not been provided with a map, so we're just, you need to be here at this such and such a time. So I'm not quite sure what the route of travel is.
That was the Capital District Triathlon.
Yes. Capital District Triathlon Association.
Thank you.
I was on the website today and it does have it on there.
And last thing I would like to talk to the board about is the population of our town is getting bigger. We are, we are experiencing growth in the town. We're also experiencing a higher volume, a larger aging population that is coming into our, that is staying in the town. Good, but also bad, okay, at one point. Bad meaning to the point. Our call line for emergency medical services are going out. All right. We're approaching now where our runs with the fire department are almost 72, 60, 67 to 70% of our calls are now emergency medical service calls. It is climbing. We're on the path to break over, well over 400 calls this year, 400 total calls. We're at 240 calls, as we said, 200. We're at two hundred and forty calls, as we said, two hundred total, total calls this year. With about sixty-eight to sixty-nine percent of that being emergency medical calls. We can only see in these numbers are going to continue to rise. The way the emergency, the, the emergency rooms are, are being handled, the way doctors' offices are now handling their patients, they're no longer seeing, a lot of patient, doctors are no longer seeing their patients. They're just telling them to call nine-one-one and go to the hospital. And that's what they're doing. Turnaround times for ambulances are getting off the chart long. The days of arriving at a hospital and being out of there in a half hour are gone. It may, it's not uncommon for an ambulance to sit in the parking lot for a half hour and then spend another forty-five minutes on a hallway with the, with the patient on the stretcher, waiting for a bed. To have an hour and a half turnaround time at a hospital is, is, is not far-fetched. Lot of variables, a lot of things are going into light that we cannot fix, but this is things that are going on with that. Right now, we're being serviced with Mohawk Ambulance Service. Okay, Mohawk's ambulance service is providing a phenomenal service to us. They are supplying ambulances from their Brunswick, and from their Brunswick and their Albany stations. Again, their call lines are up, our call lines are up. They have agreed to supply an ambulance with us, to this, if they had one available. And that's sometimes where a catching point is, if they had one available. So far, we've been doing very, very well. We've received outstanding service. There've been a couple times, like any organization out there, that you can't make a hundred percent. Okay, it's just, there's just too many calls. So we have to rely on mutual aid. So far, we've had Grafton Ambulance and Petersburg Ambulance have come down and have provided some mutual aid to us in some, in those few times that have happened. However, I'm getting feedback from rumblings that they're not getting very happy with that. The ration, the reason being is we can't reciprocate. And they feel this, they being, some of the townspeople feel that their taxpayer dollars are paying for their ambulance and they would like to stay in town and not go to another municipality that can't reciprocate. What I'm looking forward to town to do is to start looking for the future. Okay, our call volume is going to go up. We have a proposed senior housing center that's going to be going in. That just inherently is going to drive our, our numbers up. We need to start looking forward, what can we do about securing an ambulance contractually to provide so we can have the chances with the town that we're going to be able to be provided with transportation, be it whoever we decide, we could decide to go through. Right now, Dr. Hayachi, who is now employees, Albany Medical Physician, emergency, emergency room physician, also Remo Emergency Medical Organization physician, who is now also employed by Rensselaer County Bureau of Public Safety liaison, is, has four committees out there trying to address this ambulance issue. Because the ambulance service across the county is being severely, severely stressed. And they're having different ways of how can we possibly address this, this issue countywide? With some of them being a municipal-based, you know, run by the county. Now, ask you of the, the town, I would like you guys, because it comes from, better coming from town official, to, you know, reach out to, how are we doing on this matter? Reach out to our county legislator, our law, our lawmakers, and start kind of holding them accountable of, you know, we have an issue. Please start, how can you help us out? And this is what I'm kind of, because we're, we're kind of, we've gone as far as we can go with it, and they've already said, it's got to come well. Unless your town says something, it doesn't exist. So if we're looking to, how can you guys, we're looking into this, what can we do to try to secure an ambulance and to help, to be able to make sure we have an ambulance available, which will bring in mutual aid, mutual aid agreements, so we can provide services to our, to our citizens.
Isn't the county supposed to be taking that kind of action and having your own meetings? On my understanding from way back when, when the ambulance issue before.
That kind of.
Died?
Died. Right now, there's been a, a new resurgence with Dr. Hayachi. He's very, very proactive. Individual is very, very versed in emergency medical services. He's been involved with emergency medical services across the country. So he's versed in, in the, he's versed in the kind of ins and outs of emergency services. So that's what, that's why he's now a liaison with the, with the county.
In a transportation or ALS or both?
I would like to see with transportation, okay? Ideally, we need advanced life support. Do our locations with some of our remote, or more of the remote locations that we have within the township. Be able to get that level of treatment to that patient in a more expeditious manner. It helps everybody across the board. But one of the big things we do, we got to get them to the hospital. We can provide all the basic life support, everything else on the scene, but unless they're at definitive care, because they were talking about fly cars and like, we still need to get them to the hospital. That's where definitive care takes place, and that seems to be the, the trend.
What does Berlin and Grafton have? Do they have just their fire department or do they have a separate?
Grafton has their own, Grafton and Petersburg have their own. Berlin, I believe, uses Tecomic Valley. Both basic life support services. And then they ask for, they request for mutual aid for an ALS provider, which is most likely Mohawk Ambulance. Because there's, you know, they're the ones that are going out and get the county providing mutual aid.
I heard that Albany Med has the worst ambulance turnaround of any hospital in the country. Have you heard that?
I haven't heard in the country, but wouldn't be surprised.
The whole country.
Five hours is not unusual.
It's, so is anybody putting pressure on the hospitals to improve that? Because that seems like that really drains the resources.
Like even if somebody's got to.
I mean, if that's the crux of the shortage problem, is anybody putting pressure on them to fix that?
To answer that question, I'd be, I don't know. I don't know what they are. I would hope that somebody is trying to, but this is, when you work with, with big organizations, it's, it's, it's difficult. And some of the problems I've come into with some of the emergency rooms with this is staffing. Okay, well, I have seen in staffing where they have lots of beds. How do people staff and be able to, you know, go to a hundred percent capacity? Where I've seen whole wings shut down because they have lack of staffing. So that, that whole problem with the turnaround time is, is, is a large, big issue.
Sounds like a governor-ish, president-ish kind of issue.
Sounds, yes, needs to come from a lot higher than my pay grade.
We've sat, to answer Jay's question, we were actually a patient, she was a patient at Albany Med, and we sat there, we were there for like twelve hours, where we watched the ambulances come in, and there was an elderly woman, they, and they could not leave her, and they were treating patients in the waiting room because there were just no beds and there was no staff. But you were right, I mean, we saw the gurneys just backed up with the patients waiting just to even be, be triage, just to get in the door.
You know, Governor, Doctor. I said, so far right now, we're receiving, with Mohawk, and they're, they're doing an outstanding job. They're really, I mean, they, that, with the, with the colleagues headed the falls, with that, it was just, everybody was over the top with, with the service, which resulted in a, a, a rescue out of that falls. They were an integral part of that rescue.
Does the fire department have a vision of what this would look like?
Have a, we're looking, you know, the, what I could potentially see is, you know, some type of contractual agreement with one of the providers in the area. And that we have to sit down and you have to negotiate the ins and outs on that contract of how, how much, the type of providing you're going to be doing, you know, that's all. You know, how all the, the layman's law, legal term, how you would put down into that, but securing something with that, with that, with that agency. And as far as like a shared service. Reason being is having our own dedicated service, we can't afford.
No, no, like Stephen Townley just have an ambulance and they have.
Yeah, they have.
They just have, you know, it's part of their, part of the fire department. You know, they have a few EMTs and if you get hurt in the right.
It's, and the issue, what we're looking at with the firefight right now, we have some EMTs, but I will say right now, the EMTs with just a call volume are, are getting kind of burned out. If, I will tell you that if you were going to now try to establish a basic life support ambulance service in, in the town, you're going to have to pay them. Just they're not going to volunteer. That, trying to get some, into the volunteer with that is, it's basically next to impossible. As I said, we've, we've lost three of our EMTs because they moved, things of that nature. When you lose three, it's a significant hit. It's a significant hit. There's only like four EMTs that are now answering these calls. Along with drivers and some non-EMTs that are active drivers for apparatus and things of that nature. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For your time and giving us the information on various topics. Next person, I'm sorry, next group up on the liaison report is the library. Please and thank you, Julia.
Hello, everyone. I'm Batista for the library board. So for the month of July, library statistics, we had one thousand six hundred and forty items in physical circulation, seven hundred and three digital items in circulation. We had one hundred and eighty-one programming attendance. And total visits, we had nine hundred and thirty-six visits this month. For programs this month, our pre-K and elementary school kids went to our first off-site program. This was an insect adventure at the Berberville Falls Preserve. And following the last item, I would like to highlight, this was not down the elevated path, this was on the flat path that's up there. So they used schoolyard naturalist kits from Rensselaer County Youth Outdoor Program. There were thirteen people in attendance between the kids, their chaperones, and a staff member. They hiked around, found and identified insects, and they had a lot of fun. For the teen programming, right now, we have sixteen volunteers taking part in a teen reading buddies program. They come in every week and they spend time reading with younger kids, especially who are looking to strengthen their reading abilities. So it's a good way to connect people in our community. In terms of adult programming, we were joined by Dave Breitman of To Be Honey for the Let's Dish Honey Program. He brought in a beehive, it was very cool and fun. People got to look at the bees and it was a little bit more interactive. But they got to taste test and learn more about the honey making process. It was a good time. So for coming attractions in August, on Monday, August twelfth, and then Saturday, August twenty-fourth, there will be a free tech support workshop hosted by Town Techs. So if anyone in the community has a phone, tablet, computer, et cetera, that they need help with and don't want to go to Verizon, Apple, whatnot, they can go over to the library. Both of those will be at eleven AM. On August twenty-sixth, Town Techs will also be hosting a program about scam and phishing prevention. So that will also be at eleven AM, and that will be teaching individuals in the community how to identify any online scams, how to be targeting personal or financial information, how to avoid those. On August fifteenth, at six PM, there is a Let's Dish Garlic Program. The twenty-eighth, at four PM, there is a Reptile Super Show with Uncharted Wild. Additional announcements, the library applied for fifteen thousand dollars of ARPA funds. This money would help offset a loss of revenue and the increasing cost of programming. Based on some suggestions and questions we have received from board members, we are making some clarifications and edits on that proposal, and we hope to have the final copy where editing, we intend to have it to before the end of this month for consideration, just to address those suggestions and complaints. Also, on Election Day this November, voters will see a ballot initiative requesting an increase of ten thousand dollars annually for the library's funding. The library's funding allocation has not increased since twenty seventeen.
How much is your budget right now, though? How much is the library's budget right now?
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head. I do know that we are one of the less funded libraries in the Upper Hudson Library Program. For the ten thousand dollars, if your home is assessed to be two hundred thousand dollars, it would be about three dollars extra per year on your taxes.
And it about like eighty thousand now, the library budget?
I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, and I don't want to give you one.
That's about right.
And then this is supposed to be a fully volunteer, no cost to the residents.
There is.
When it was first came in twenty-four years ago, everybody came in and said, it won't cost the town anything. And now we're at eighty thousand dollars for a budget. How much is the fire department budget?
Three thirty.
Three thirty.
So it significantly less, over the past four years, there's been over a three hundred percent increase in program attendance, all programs are free, for program attendees to attend. There's still the cost of getting books and materials if you want a physical library there. They have to do different repairs, they do have to pay for the gas, electricity. There's, there are costs involved. There's no way that any program, any business in a town can run for completely free. Anyone who has questions, they are planning information sessions. If people have questions and want to bring concerns to their attention, and that's why it's going to be on the ballot. If you support it, great. If you don't, it's your right to vote no.
No, I know. I just was wondering about the cost because it just, like you said, everything's going up, but everybody else's salaries, you know, aren't going up. So we have to be considerate to the residents and the retired people that we have here and make sure we're being fiscally responsible.
Which is why it's on the ballot for people to consider and vote for. Just like everyone else's cost is going up, library cost is going up as well. So, and if you look up Poston Hill, there's Berberville Falls and Poston Hill Library listed on Google. So we have two things on Google currently. So, but if anyone does have questions about that proposal, they will be doing Q and A sessions. So I would encourage anyone to go and let their thoughts be known. And if you want a candidate, you have the exact current budget amount for your information. I just don't want to give you one.
No, no, I appreciate it, just.
So what you're basically saying is you need over a thirty percent increase in the amount of money that you have. Cause twenty-five thousand, fifteen and ten, and you have a rounded seventy, eighty thousand budget, that's over thirty percent increase. Have your costs gone up by thirty percent?
We, there are two separate numbers. And I would like to hold off on ARPA as agreed upon with the board, Tom and Lynn Silverman, until we have that final proposal for you. As I stated, the ARPA funding would be a one-time cost. So that's not an annual increase. That's one time, as dictated by ARPA, to help combat any revenue loss throughout the pandemic and the growing program costs. The ten thousand dollars, which is the proposal on the ballot for the town to vote on, would be an annual increase. But again, that's for the town to vote on, that's to address the ongoing inflation that everyone is experiencing right now. Any more questions?
Julia, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the liaison is the youth advisory. Chair Horton sent this note in. This is the last week of summer camp, and it has been very successful, and the kids had a great time. We sent out a form to all the parents for feedback for next year's. The majority of counselors did a great job this year. We did have a few issues and had to let two counselors go this week due to behavior issues at work. We look forward to camp next year. Our next town-wide event will be the Halloween Parade in October. The Great Escape trip went very well. That's what we have. And the next item is from the Conservation Advisory Committee. Greg Patner is the chairperson, unfortunately, he was not able to make it tonight, but he did send in a brief little report. Conservation Advisory Council met on July twenty-four to have further discussion on proposal number three of twenty twenty-four. Based on the discussion at that meeting, an opinion has been drafted. Based on the discussion at that meeting, an opinion has been drafted and circulated to members for further discussion and input. And that's what we have in the CAC. Next item up is on discussion items. Update on water district number two. Have been conversing with Mr. Goodfriend from Warwick Bond down in the city, referencing materials that he wants to make sure he has in order to get the process going with the, uh, in preparation for receiving funds. And, uh, need the help of Sue and Lindsay. They were gracious enough to help me put, and Katie, they were gracious enough to help me put the various information together, which we have sent over to Ian for his fire review. He has been conversing with Mr. Goodfriend on the Bond situation and that, um, and getting the material for the Bond situation. And that's what was done there. Uh, had a couple of conversations with Mr. Leverge. And, uh, that's, that's where we are right now on the water district number two. Next item up is the update on fundraising for the World War II Memorial. Excuse me, I have another question.
We, I'm happy to report that we are in the home stretch, I think. DJ and I are going through the, the list, um, making sure everything is spelled correctly. We're going to submit it to the Historical Society for their review also. And we'd like to get that ordered soon because it, it takes a while for recruits to come back with, that you have to sign off on for all the letters. Right now, we have $19,875. And our goal was 21, so I only have to submit a deposit to get the wall rolling at Lockages. So that's our intention is to go forward.
Good job.
Wow. Impressive.
Today has been possible. Where's the memorial going to go? Oh, Trump, right down here.
Very nice. Impressive. Very good job. Uh, the next item we have is town organizational listing chart. Uh, there have been some revisions made since the first of the year. The list is inclusive of all those revisions that have been made. And just ask the board to review, see if there's anything that sticks out, anything changes that have to be put through.
You can do it on the election app or on the blog, but after when you move it.
Okay, hopefully we accept the updated organizational meeting revisions. That would be under action items, or can we do it now?
No, you can, you can move it now. So you should propose a resolution to approve the title of the, the organizational meeting yet.
That's my motion. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll second David's motion.
Councilwoman Butler?
Yes.
Council, councilmembers, easy?
I can go on there. Do I have any, uh? Yes, your next question. Do I have any issues? Um, no.
What's my house? Supervisor Russell?
Yes, please. Okay, the motion carries, I'm sorry, the resolution carries for zip, zip. Thank you very much. Okay, next item up on the agenda for tonight are reports. Supervisor's report. Water District Number Two Bond Information. We've been working with that with Mr. Goodfriend and sending back and forth and sending to Ian for his review before final sending in to Mr. Goodfriend. And as I mentioned, talked to Mr. Leverge on several occasions. I've attended planning board and zoning board meetings, a library meeting, comprehensive plan review meeting, and caught the end of the fire department meeting the other night. Went to gentlemen for a ride again so late. Remembered a little bit behind the scenes support work for the comprehensive plan. Get that running, secure locations for that. Checked in with the summer camp several times and, and resident interaction and listened to some resident situations. Worked with Frank and Olivia in regards to setting up the dis, town park discussion session next Tuesday at 8:13 at Pavilion. And, um, when no, there was no email service at town hall on Tuesday. Digital tow path did not work at all. So if you tried to get into us, we had nothing. It lasted the whole day through the end of the night, early all night into Wednesday morning it was corrected. Uh, talked to Mike, Joe Walker, IT man, and, uh, we've been reviewing the situation. He backed me with his thoughts on what happened with the digital tow path. Unfortunately, Ian is not here tonight. He, as I mentioned, he was working with, we've been with Mr. Goodfriend. And he's also, he sent a letter out to, to our residents. Question, which is in their packets. And, uh, that is, that's what I have looking in right now on the 24th.
During the month of July, Town Court took in $19,985.29. Of that amount, $19,611.79 was turned over to the supervisor.
Thank you very much, Sue.
I'll make the notes and fix them.
Okay, I'll second that motion to accept June's report. Anyone in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anybody abstaining? Four zip, zip. Thank you very much. Uh, we have the report from Chip Golden, our water manager. In the packet. And just, I do what he's been going, uh, what he has done. Uh, we're making progress on, just a synopsis of the report. Uh, we're making progress on the antenna replacement situation. They whittled that down pretty good. Also started some flushing on various hydrants. We had seven deep safe location locates performed during the month of July. We're working on taking, when they do with the antennas and do, they take pictures on the inside to help with the left service, line survey, which is finished in February, October 16th. We're making progress on that. Go control report, talked with Bob briefly and things are going okay. At some point in time, Creekside Kennels is interested in getting, getting more involved with the town. As far as overnight stays, they're not quite ready yet. But when the gentleman comes back into town, uh, we'll be able to talk further with them. So as to establish that as an hospital refuse for our overnight stay location for some of the dogs that Bob will pick up. DJ was gracious enough to submit the highway report. I'm sorry, I missed the assessors' report. Michelle supplied the assessors' report. She gave numbers, final role, final assessment role summary, 2024, 2,185 parcels, assessed value of $98,895,599. And as I mentioned, DJ did submit a detailed report on activity from July 8th to August 7th. Thank you very much, DJ. Next item up is payment of bills. I move that we pay the general bills of $8,208.31.
One second.
Thank you, June. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Four zip, zip.
I move that we pay the water bills of $1,064.178.
That's a good, thank you, Fred.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
I move that we pay the highway bills of $10,187.55.
I'll second that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Anybody abstaining?
Four zip, zip, yes, sir. Okay, um, next item up is reopening the public comment period. If anyone needs to read the warning, which is to make an additional comment. Please and thank you.
David Basil, the boss of our company, what is going on with the Rosberg Road? Turn around at the end.
Without Ian here, I can't do the answer, sir. Okay, that is in. I don't.
Our attorney's good at formulating the words as you probably want to say.
I don't know anything about the history of this matter, so I really can't even. I can't go words in supervisor's mouth.
Potentially has lawsuit situation, so we can't really discuss it publicly. I'm, I'm just curious, what's your concerns about that?
Well, my concern is, you know, one is going to be starting here in a couple of months. DJ's gonna have a problem turning around trucks. We have a problem turning around trucks. I mean, my cheese vehicle's only 20 foot long and it takes me, you know, three turns to turn around down the end. So the fire truck is going to be much harder. And now they have rocks on the one side, um, again. So I just wonder what was going on.
Sorry, so I will say, nothing he can tell you at this time.
That's cool.
We need the lawyer to say that.
I just want to ask about the budget too. We're through two quarters and haven't seen anything yet. And September is right around the corner for the departments to have their information. And so have you decided who's going to put up budgets again?
I have, I've asked, I've asked, I've asked the one again for his assistance. I'm putting it together with him, assembling information. I know we have to get it done and get the information out to the departments by September.
I think the department budget sheets are like a template. And I think you just have to copy them and give them to the different departments at a certain time so that they can fill them out, report back to you. I don't think that's rocket science or anything. I'm sure you have a template somewhere in the office.
My point is that it's through two quarters and we haven't seen profit and loss. We don't know, we need to be prepared.
What's the status of that?
Has, has your training got to that point yet for QuickBooks that you can get that profit and loss to us?
And to the departments?
Yeah. Uh, that is ongoing. Um, there is, um, a lot of missing information that we're having to reconcile with the, the bank. We have to put information into the bank into QuickBooks. The information, we can, we could, sure, we could print you out, profit, loss, but the information's not going to be good. The information that is in QuickBooks is not good.
You're still reconciling accounts and bank statements?
Correct.
Okay.
We have to go back to January 1st for all of those accounts. Are you reconciling the bank statement? We're trying. Trying. We're, we're trying. Okay.
Would it be advisable to hire an accounting firm to assist with this?
I was, I was going to ask the board.
Because there will be time critical at some point.
I was going to ask the board for their consideration.
At least for a temporary basis to.
At least to speed up the process.
BLT accounting, we had a brief conversation with the gentleman, BLT accounting.
But it's the, it's only as good as the data entry. So if the data entry isn't there and hasn't been there until you can backtrack all that.
Well, that's where having additional people might help.
You're talking resources to actually assist getting the job, bringing reconciliations.
The consultant that I'm working with is also doing that. So, I mean, she is actively working on that with me when we're on our two and three hour sessions. Okay.
Yes, Diane's been very good. Katie's been working with her. And it is a time-going process, making progress, little by little. But Diane is actively involved in assisting and correcting things and showing us how, how to do that.
Is it every department that's been affected? Yes, every account that we have.
Do you have a timetable for what will be done?
I have to have it done by beginning of September.
It's only a month now.
Yes, sir, I know that.
That's why I say, do we have the extra money in our contingency? That if we had to hire somebody to get more bodies on it?
I think we could possibly, we could, there are funds that we could happen to.
Because the longer we wait, the more bodies are going to be. So if you have an option, that's, that's a jump ahead.
Yes, sir. Agreed. Okay, thank you very much. All right, that concludes the public session. Have a nice meeting. We thank everyone for their attendance and I appreciate your patience.
Thank you.
So we're doing, and it's up to. Well, there are some persons we probably want to talk to. Executive session, executive session.
I'll only fill it in this one time. You were here too, for the record. You were here too, for the record. Why I get the big ones?
Oh, good. So far. I just want to see if it's just a small.
I trust your judgment.